All your speakers?
Thank you, Chip. You're hired.
So I'll get out of your way here. Sorry about that.
It's okay if I stand?
Sure. As long as we can pull the mic to wherever you're going to be.
Great.
Let me just get rid of the light on you. You're unplugged, so I won't worry about that.
Good, thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. Nick, at first I was a little disappointed that we weren't on first, but it was a very interesting presentation, so I'm glad I sat through it. Thank you.
So I'm looking for collaboration.
We've worked together in the past. In fact, the Presum Scott location facility, we converted with LED lighting a few years back. So we've met the group up in Portland. I thought I would, after that introduction, I thought I would just take a few moments to tell you a little bit about Affinity LED. I do have packages for all of you. Well, not overhead screens, because I think we have, you know, subject matter that's a little bit different. We actually have for the town of Berwick a complete presentation for you, which, depending on your time, we certainly can talk specifically about the details. For the town of North Berwick, we've put together some of the details for you, but I think we have a few things. For example, network value, that's Central Main Power's. The one piece that we don't have from North Berwick is your network value number. So we can, you know, talk about the numbers, but there's that check that you'll have to write for your municipal purchase. And for Lebanon, while we've started working on it and we have all your data, because you're officially in the RFP stage, as we talked about, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to present anything prior to the RFP date, obviously.
They more or less presented, because this got delayed. We brought them in ahead of time. It was going to be here, but it's... So, and since then, we've now put out an RFP as of April 1, which is why then, obviously now we're in that RFP parade, which is why he won't talk about us tonight.
So I'll walk briefly through a little bit of our history. We were founded in 2012. You'll see this in the official introduction letter for the town of Berwick. We were founded in 2012 in Portsmouth. My colleague, John Branigan, has his toes in the water and a cold beer in his hand in Florida, visiting his mom with his family a couple of days ahead of the main school break. So otherwise, he would be here. John lives in South Berwick. I'm from Portsmouth. We founded in Portsmouth and our facility is in the Washington Street Mill in Dover, New Hampshire. And appropriately, with that introduction, when we started our company in 2012, with my supply chain background and John's business development and licensing background, we both originally came from the Timberland Company, actually. And I was overseas for many years with the company. The goal was always to bring manufacturing back to the U.S. And it was a real challenge to figure out how to do that. And in 2015, we finally received all of our certifications to build street lighting right in our Dover facility. So we have U.S. veterans building all of our product from streetlights. We started with streetlights. And we added parking lot lights, basically shoebox replacements and floods that we build there. And last year, in 2018, we started building our own smart connected, called Click Connected, smart lighting for buildings. In fact, the first introduction of Click Connected smart lighting for buildings was actually, is actually being just completed now in the Rochester School District. It's the largest lighting project in the state of New Hampshire for 1819. It's a $1.2 million project. We're installing over 6,000 fixtures into the Rochester School District. We had one of the major cities, actually did a walkthrough of the Rochester Middle School today, and they were just blown away by it. So, after.
And all those 6,000 is making your facility?
We make in our facility, yes. All built by U.S. veterans. You'll see everything that we give to you. It'll say "American Built, Assembled with Pride by U.S. Veterans in Dover, New Hampshire." And that's something we're really... I am not a veteran, although I look back and think that I should have. Chip and I had a conversation before. I'm a proud U.S. Navy dad. My son is a lieutenant in the Navy. He's currently deployed overseas for his third time and is a graduate of Norwich University. And we had our conversation about Chip's career. We have a combination of Navy, Air Force, and Marines. We are in conversation right now, because we're hiring more employees, that soon the Army will join. And we had several Coast Guard employees in the past as well. And there were lots of jokes that went around by the Navy guys, which are the majority. When a Coast Guard ship goes down, what do the Coast Guard guys do? They roll up their pants and they walk to shore? Anyway, that's what the Navy guys all have to say. So we have, we've installed... The topic tonight, of course, is about street lighting. And I also think that, you know, at some point, we'd love to have a conversation with all of you in support of MSAD about the type of savings that will come from the potential conversion of LED lighting in the schools. Rochester will save almost $150,000 a year in electricity as a result of the smart lighting. Our street lighting, currently our project underway right now, which I think is number 35 in New Hampshire and Maine, is the city of Augusta. We're about 2/3 through installing almost 2,300 streetlights. And in the city of Augusta, it's all networked and smart controls built in. So instead of a photocell, we actually have a wireless communication node that's actually installed on top of the fixture instead of the traditional photocell. Most communities have the photocell. We were the first and only company to be able to install smart controls in the state of New Hampshire. The city of Dover has almost 1,800 smart-controlled streetlights. And we have, like I said, I think we're on number 35 with the city of Augusta. And we're moving into the city of Gardner after that. As soon as Augusta's finished, we're already under contract and the materials are on the ground at the public works, so we'll be moving into Augusta next. Elliott was our first Maine installation. We had great weather in February for doing that. And Elliott completed in just a couple of days. I think they had 100 streetlights, so it was a fairly quick installation. We are not the first to be in the state of Maine. There were others in before us. We entered in the second quarter of last year. Finally, there were changes in May to the tariff that made it clear about how to be able to actually offer a proposal that would represent what your costs would be moving forward in terms of both installation cost plus the change in your monthly cost that you would be responsible through Central Main Power and potentially any third-party provider of your energy. So with that, we started putting proposals out. And the first two bids that were put out were in Kittery and Elliott. Kittery, we are just signing the contractual details now. We've been awarded Kittery as well. So there's Augusta, Gardner, Elliott, and Kittery to date. And there's a, well, rather not put the names on the table, there's about two dozen other communities that we're under conversation with, similar to what we're doing with you tonight. Across the state of New Hampshire, we have installed almost 30,000 streetlights across the state. Humbly speaking, we have installed more streetlights in more communities and been competitively awarded in more communities than all of the street lighting industry competitors combined. So we're pretty proud to be Northern New England's number-one LED street lighting manufacturer. And most importantly, knowing that they're all being built by U.S. veterans. So it's a great feeling. And we're humbled and thrilled that our success continues and hope that we can help you as well. Our light is pretty unique in that the certifications that are required for streetlights are fairly extensive in terms of qualifying, you know, their expected lifetimes. Everything has to be third-party certified for us to receive Design Lights Consortium listings, which is initially intended to confirm the energy efficiency without being able to extend any performance quotes above what the lights will actually do or lifetime. So a lot of the testing is set by the Department of Energy and by the Northeast Energy Partners, who actually created the Design Lights Consortium so that they could have a way to reliably understand whose equipment was good and whose equipment potentially was not. So everything has to be third-party certified to be Design Lights Consortium listed. And it's up, you know, put up on a website that utilities and municipalities alike can go and say, is it or is it not actually listed? We're tested for lifetimes of our LED chips. We're tested for overall ratings of our energy efficiency. And of course, as part of that, we also have to have the right safety certification. So everything that we're showing you tonight is UL certified. And our facility also has to be, on a quarterly basis, also UL inspected with surprise drive-bys by UL inspectors to come in and say, what are you building today? Get your files out. Let's see if you're making them the way you're supposed to be making them. From anything, from documentation that shows wire that's traced back to the spool and that all materials that were certified on the original UL product are, in fact, on every delivery, there's additional certifications that we're using those materials. So no changes. We use the best of materials out there. There are many, many LED chip manufacturers. The world has come a long way in terms of stabilization of LED technology. We've chosen to use an American company, Cree Chips. While maybe you've heard the news that Cree is actually selling their lighting division, it's because they're focusing on what they do best, which is they're incredible chipmakers. And after making extensive decisions about who we were going to use, we made a decision to stick to Cree. So these are some of the best Cree chips that are made out there. They are the best Cree chips that are made out there. We use Meanwhile drivers. Meanwhile is the world's leading power system company. So our lights are produced with Meanwhile drivers. We use Wago connectors, which is a German technology, a German brand. And we actually create our lights with a quick disconnect so that once we've installed them, inclusive in the state of Maine, under Central Main Power, inclusive of a fuse that has to be installed in line as part of the installation for all Central Main Power installations, any future maintenance will be able to disconnect with a very simple, you know, disconnect that can be done by any good qualified master electrician like the Johnsons. We've worked together in the past also for... Because Mike's done some terrific work for us. I was surprised to see you today, so it's nice to see you. Anyway, our housings are all made, are powder-coated with a 10-year powder coating. We use all of the metallics, the screws and the fixings on here are made for corrosive environments. It's actually marine-grade stainless. New England winters are brutal. And New England weather near the sea coast is. And the air is fairly corrosive, so we've specked that in. And we've also built the light so that, you know, over the next 20 years, which is the expected lifetime of these, that you can expect these lights are going to continue to perform and stay on the poles and not fall apart by making sure that everything is made out of aluminum housings and then powder coated. What have I missed? Does anybody have any questions? So the... Would you like me to light one of these up? Our recommendation is...
Is there a variety of styles or is that the primary design?
It's dependent on... The style of the light is dependent on what you're replacing. Generally, we're out there working with, you know, Cobra heads, the classic Cobra head. Most of what you've got across the communities are high-pressure sodium, that orange glow that has about a 20%, 25% actual color rendering. So we're used to that orange glow, but actually, it doesn't... You know, the grass has turned orange since high-pressure sodium was put in. If you laid a $5 bill on the ground and you took a picture of it, you'd be surprised that you took a picture of an orange $5 bill. Under the LED lighting, you're over 70%. Generally, in the range of about 75% of actual color rendering to natural sunlight. So the grass is going to get green again. And the other piece of, the important piece of... I'm just going to put a shorting cap on here. They don't operate without something in the photocell receptacle. Without a... The other piece of what, you know, our lights are designed for is they are compliant with dark sky requirements. So not a single lumen in the testing that's put in a globe, not a single lumen is allowed to point up, not one single lumen. And there are ranges of very high, high, medium, and low angles where we have to meet requirements of how many lumens are set. What that is for is because there are ratings called bug ratings, back, up, and glare ratings that all lights are given. And again, you have to pass certain requirements to be able to comply and meet DLC requirements for street lighting. Our lights are designed to provide... Plug this in now. We're in good shape. So as you can see, we're using a... Our recommendation is 3000K. 3000K is a warmer light than you'll see out there and that you have seen out there. Most of our installations, over the past couple of years anyway, almost have been 100% 3000K. The American Medical Association has recommended for 3000K, which is a warmer light because it has less blue spectrum in it. And you'll see that the optics, if you were standing under a typical streetlight, you'd have light pretty much going anywhere. Because the optics are designed to direct the light where the street is and some behind the pole, you'll see that using this type, these type of LED optics, you'll get 1 and 3/4, 1.75 times the height. The pole height is the distance that it will throw in front of the pole. And it will throw some light to the back. But there's also a cutoff on even the highest levels of glare behind it. So you don't, what you won't see is a lot of light going into the bedroom windows like streetlights do today, depending on where they're located, that they're on the street. The lumen value, the actually light output, as we do the takedowns with you, from what you've got installed today to what we recommend, you'll see that the light output actually on the streets is actually more than you've got today, although they have less lumen output. You're not throwing it everywhere because the optics are directed very specifically. If you were here, standing behind this and looking up at the streetlight, you'd say it feels like it's a little bit dim because the light isn't being directed at your eye if you're standing behind the pole, looking up. But if you stood right under it and stared up it, of course, it's going to be really bright and uncomfortable because the light is only being presented where it should be, which is directly down to the street with a long throw up and down the street.
Is the height any different from what the existing lights are?
It's the same height. So what we'll be doing as part of our installation is we... I'm just going to put this right here for now. We don't have to worry about heat because it doesn't put off a lot of heat. What we'll be doing is using the existing mast arms. The installation involves putting in a fuse between the power coming from the pole and into the mast arm. And that's required by Central Main Power so that there can be a complete disconnection of power. It's different than whatever source in Unitil in New Hampshire require. And then we take off the old Cobra head. We dispose of the mercury-based lamps that are in there, the bulbs themselves. And we also dispose of the Cobra heads and give you a proper certificate of disposal so that you have, you know, that you've taken proper care of hazardous materials. We use universal recycling technologies out of Dover. We'll actually come in and pick up everything once it's all done. Our installation involves, in Maine, we're using Coats Brothers. It's a company out of Randolph, Maine. They've been Central Main Power contractors for 53 years. A long history of working with Central Main Power and working on their lines. And they will come through, install the fuse, remove the Cobra head, and put on the new LED light. And dependent on if you decided to go with smart controls, which allow you to actually monitor the health of your system and understand if lights are out or not. And eventually, that you'll be able to... And the trend is definitely coming that way because they do actually meter how much power you're using. At some point, probably very soon, you would expect that regulations will change and that you'll be able to pay for what you actually consume versus what's assumed that you consume. And it's all based on the farmer's almanac, I think. It's estimated hours of darkness. So you're actually not measured. It's un-measured bills. And that's why there's a large trend to go to, you know, networked lighting so that you actually can make decisions about how much you consume, when you consume it. And you'll be able to actually have those records. And there are already signs in Massachusetts that there are tariffs being presented for actual consumption.
So that smart sensor also can be used for metering?
Yes, yeah. Everyone can be polled. They track the lifetime hours burned. They track actually voltage readings. They track total kilowatt-hours used. They track amperage. They track everything, yeah.
How many receivers do you need for the size of a town?
It depends. In the city of Dover, which is a little over 1,800 lights, we ended up using five. We put in five gateways. And they were determined based on strategic areas of the city that were necessary. Dependent on the system, you can run 500 or more per gateway. But it also, you're creating a mesh, a wireless mesh network. So they have to be able to hop and speak to each other. So there are... Sometimes there's challenges in the city of Augusta out of lights capable for putting in the smart network, which is going to be close to 2,000 altogether, inclusive of some of their city-metered lighting. We're probably going to have, we could have up to 100 in some of the outer areas like Tocus Pond area over near Vasselboro. Those areas, we're actually, we're not going to be able to make those hops today. And we'll just put regular photocells on them.
Yeah, I was just thinking. Downtowns are easy because we're congested. But when we get our, I mean, when I look at North Berwick, they have 156 lights. About 75 of them are in the downtown area, so those are pretty easy. It's when you get to the ones that are, you know, that literally go to, they're only on intersections, five miles out of downtown.
Correct.
Couple miles between each other.
Right. So when you're a couple of miles between each other, you'll have more challenges in terms of connectivity.
What's your...
In that estimate, you'd end up with a single gateway, you know, that would be tied and installed somewhere where you can get, you know, CAT 5 connection into your server so we can have its, you know, IP address. And the gateway basically sends out periodic polling, messages, schedules, depending on how sophisticated that you decide to run your system.
What you, I know you guys have been doing it for a while. Your photo Y failure, I mean, how, do you guys have, what's your... What do you guys look at for annual maintenance for a town that's looking to purchase them? I mean, we're going to have some sort of maintenance, knowing that the lights will last, you know, 20, 25 years. Certainly, the photo Y is most probably the thing that's going to fail first.
That's absolutely correct. Out of, out of over 30,000 streetlights that have gone up in the state of New Hampshire, we've had, I would say, probably in the range of about 200 photo Y failures. And the photo Y is the, probably the weakest point, obviously, where they get sticky contactors and, you know, depending just on certain conditions, environment, et cetera. We have, we've had, and we wouldn't expect to have any LED module failures. It's very stable construction. It's like, you know, it's like a steel wall. And I think we've had maybe a dozen, dozen and a half drivers. And sometimes you can't trace back whether it's been from some kind of a power surge, et cetera, because we can't monitor. In most communities, we can't monitor what's happened. So, but generally, they'll take a fairly strong hit. They've got surge protection up to 20 K A, K V. So they'll take a hit. It's generally... Our recommendation that we're providing, you know, our council is, because you don't know, is you should plan on a service, a service expectation of about 2% to 3% per year. So a couple, maybe three or four in your case. It's hard to tell. We are, there's a lot of discussion with a large group of communities that are sort of in that, Gardner, Augusta. The Waterville bid was just turned in. And there's a lot of communities in that area that are talking about coming on board altogether and then having conversations with Coats Brothers. And I think Elliott and Kittery will be in the same conversation about what's the maintenance contract? You know, can you guarantee, you know, in X number of days that you can be here to address any maintenance concerns? But you can also have your own conversations with local suppliers about, that are master electricians that might be able to provide a better, more local service for you as well.
As far as repair, are those things, I mean, so a photo Y failure, a drive failure, that's just a part that you guys can then replace, correct?
Absolutely. So the warranty on our products is 10 years. The equipment, the complete equipment, which includes the photo Y, is a 10-year warranty. So if you have any issues in terms of replacements are required, the equipment is on us for 10 years. And if, you know, once you, when you start to look at the numbers in terms of your month, your annual savings, you know, just for the warranty period of 10 years, you'll pay yourself back 3X, in some cases, 4X times across that 10 years. Because you won't see a payback on a standard installation that's really more than three years if you decided to go with a non-networked option. You'll be under three years in terms of payoff. When I think about, you know, watching solar presentations and we look at lighting presentation, it's fairly similar for, you know, buildings and things like that. It's pretty amazing how quickly the energy efficiency in lighting, street lighting or, you know, metered lighting, how quickly the paybacks are.
And most of the communities I've talked to, it's two and a half to three-year payment.
Yes. And we're seeing the same numbers for all of you. And we're seeing the same numbers for all of you, and that includes your netbook value. For Berwick, since we had your netbook value, that's inclusive of it. It's three years or under. And you'll be the same. You're looking at a little over two years right now until we get your netbook value numbers, and then we plug that in, and it probably will be.
And that'll be a small number for us.
It almost is a hair over one year for me in those.
Yeah. It's pretty amazing, like, how quickly that you'll be able to get your.
If you haven't installed streetlights within the past 20 years, your netbook value is zippo, because you're guaranteed.
That was us.
But for some of us who've installed, I mean, we've installed streetlights since that time, that's where the netbook value goes up.
Sure. And there's, you know, there's some communities that are writing pretty large checks out there, and still.
Savings.
The investment is three years or less in terms of, you know, simple payoff. Big cities, you know, writing six-figure checks out there, and it really doesn't matter because it's offset by the fact that you're, based on the tariff, your savings on your actual street lighting bill are gonna be 90%, because you're getting rid of your lighting rentals, the lighting service costs, and your consumption cost on your energy is dropping by 65 to 70%, the amount of energy that you're gonna consume. So, and the only thing that, so today, you're paying for your KWH rate to the utility for everything you consume at higher wattages. You know, a 50-watt high-pressure sodium is a 65-watt rated with the ballast fixture. 100-watt is 130-watt rated fixture. Those are gonna get replaced with 25- and 40-watt products. So it makes a difference very, very quickly in terms of the savings. So you'll drop your lighting service costs. You'll only be paying for the energy that you consume on a KWH basis, but you'll be doing it at LED wattages. And you'll pay a small delivery service charge per kilowatt hour also, which is under 5 cents per kilowatt hour that you'll be paying to Central Main Power. So it's very good. It's about a nine, I mean, it's 88 to 91%, dependent on what the inventory looks like, the balance of inventory between all of your, all of your streetlights. But it's that much of a reduction, and that's why it's such a good proposal for all of you to go ahead with.
Are you guys doing decorative lights as well? Are you guys basing Cobra heads?
We do Cobra heads. We do floods and shoebox replacements. Decoratives, it depends on really what it is. We don't build decoratives. We rebuild and relamp the decorations.
Okay, so you're just relamping the kit?
Sure. Yeah. So we'll bring in kits that will, you know, be very cost-effective for you, but don't lose the essence of, if you've got Sternberg's, a Spring City.
Granville.
Beautiful Finials, and, exactly. Those can be easily retrofit and rebuilt.
Very tricky.
Yeah.
Very tricky.
Yeah.
Didn't work for one member.
Well, it did.
There was CFP, so it wasn't saying there's anything to change the bulb, but it.
Right. So certainly, we were not the first company to be in Maine, and maybe not the first company that you've spoken with, but certainly, I think, all the benefits of having a company that's local, that's put in more lights in northern New England than anybody, and the fact that, you know, we're 10 minutes down the road from you for.
We can come find you.
You can come find us, yes.
So if they, if you put regular photocells in to start.
Yes.
And this change goes through, and now they're gonna, you're gonna be able to meter them, that's something that can easily be put on later on, right?
You can do that later on. And the effort to do it later on is you'll have a small cost to have a bucket truck, you know, travel light to light, but there's not a lot of installation work. It's gonna be.
It's a twist accordingly.
It's an untwist, and it's a twist with a couple of commissions on an iPad. And speaking of the iPad, we do an investment-grade audit for you, so we will confirm the actual assets that you have against what you're paying for and hopefully have. But we'll verify that and adjust, make any adjustments with you with Central Main Power to adjust exactly what the inventory is so that you know what you bought and what you're installing. We'll also, based on that GIS audit, it's all GIS-based, we'll also sit down and do a lighting plan with you. We can go as extensive as doing certifications and independent lighting design to doing a designed retrofit. And that's what most of you will be facing because the standards out there, there's only one roadway standard, it's called RP8. I think it's RP814 now, 2014 is the latest update, which is an IESNA, Illuminating Engineering Society of North America standard. Our RP8 is, while it's voluntary, it's a recommendation. It's really a standard to be placed on building new cities, new roads, because it requires continuous lighting specifically spaced according to the current standards, and it's a little more difficult to try and reach. What we'll work with you on is to make sure that you have a designed retrofit that's looking at what's the lighting on local roads versus collector roads versus any major roads that we're gonna come across? What, where are there sensitive receptors such as senior homes, schools, hospitals, places that require additional looking, whether it be from the fire chief or the police chief? Understanding why on a road that has, you know, all 50-watt high-pressure sodium, why is that 1,000-watt high-pressure sodium flood in the middle of this road? Somebody's got an answer of the history of why, and it might be because, oh, well, there used to be a Hannaford here, or we found that in Augusta. This is where the old Hannaford used to be, and we ended up normalizing some of these roads that said it's lighting that was for, actually, how these roads were occupied in the past, but they no longer are occupied that way. So we'll have those personal discussions with the stakeholders to make sure that when we go back and make these changes, absent of any discussions of are you missing lights in critical areas, in most cases, it'll be conversations about does this normalization make sense? And are there reasons for any anomalies out there that are very specific to each of How am I doing so far? So we're gonna provide for each of you a small booklet about us, just a little bit about our, you know, our manufacturing facility and history. On the back is a copy of what you may have seen in Maine, Town and City, that we're in on, right across from Mary Saban's, a note from the MMA that was placed in this month. That's changing, though. It's no longer 35 communities, it's 38 communities because we've just been selected by, we've just been awarded Exeter, New Hampshire, Hampton, New Hampshire, and Plasda, New Hampshire. So that's jumped, and I think these numbers will be going up again next month with more Maine communities. We have a little bit about, we've got testimonials from real people we've worked with that have wrote these for us, from Augusta, Portsmouth, Dover, and Claremont. Claremont was actually the first city that we did. And then there is a list of similar projects, just about every community that we've installed, the details of how many lights we put in, who was the stakeholder. So we wanna be right up front with you that feel free to call any of these people in any of these communities if you wanna know more about us. We take pride in maybe overdoing the service levels just to make sure that you're happy 'cause at the end of the day, my dad was an independent businessman, and he told me you can, you can lose, in his business, he was in the footwear business, he said you can lose an entire neighborhood from one cup of coffee. And we consider that to be, I've taken that into account as well, that every customer, it doesn't matter if you've got, if it's West Gardner with seven lights, or it's the city of Augusta with, you know, 2,300 lights, every customer's important to us, 'cause it's important to you and the people in your community. A little bit about our key personnel, the people that we work with, and then specification sheets to talk a little bit about the lights that we do produce, and this is all exterior lighting for this conversation. And also a little bit about these totes, something that's also different about us. We don't use corrugated boxes when we build our lighting. Every one of these totes, we put three Cobra heads in, and they're color-coded by what wattage they are. And this is what goes on the buckets. This is how it leaves the factory. So your public works garage or highway garage would be stacked up with these enough, should we be fortunate enough to work with you. And these go right onto the bucket truck, and the bucket truck and a following vehicle, which is a dump body, or rack body, is behind it to collect the Cobra heads that are coming down, the old legacy lights. And at the end of the installation, we've got a stack of these all put back the way they sit before they're filled again, and we bring them back and we reuse them. And in the case of Berwick, it might not seem like a big deal, you know, on an individual basis, but we take 313 pounds of solid waste that would be corrugated if we were fortunate enough to do the town of Berwick, that wouldn't go into your solid waste dump, and 173 pounds of CO2 that would be generated as a result of that corrugated, and we eliminate it by putting it into these totes and reusing them. So these have been all over the Northeast, used over and over again. Doing well and doing good is how we, you know, consider, you know, what we talk about our business. We're trying to help you to do well financially, but also to do some good in terms of just, you know, environmental-friendly practices that we put in place, and obviously, you're adopting as well if you're hiring us. So I have one of these for each of you, and then I have a, and certainly would love to have separate conversations tonight, or we can set up to meet at another time.
Yep.
Long wait.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yes.
She's a guru in Europe.
She just says so.
I'll tell you.
Should we come, Steve?
Great.
We can talk a little more about that.
Now, have you ever seen an LED bulb burn out? Do they lose efficiency at all with 20-year period, or they stay max output and just go out one day?
So, yes, there is some lumen depreciation in LED chips, and the technology today has changed quite a bit. These Cree chips are actually rated at 262,000 hours. And what that means is that you'll see very little lumen depreciation, and the reason why it is, and these are tests, part of the third-party tests have to be provided by the Cree Corporation, which are LM8 reports, which end up doing calc, falling into new calculations that are Department of Energy reports called TM21, and that's how you rate the lifetime, at what percentage loss is projected based on burning these for 6,000 and 8,000 hours. Of course, that's a long time, 8,000 hours is a whole year.
I've never seen one burn before. And what do those smart sensors tell us when they get near the end of life? Should we get prepared to have some changed out, or?
The expected life of, if you're going with the smart nodes, the expected lifetime of the smart nodes is in excess of 20 years. They also come with a 10-year warranty.
Oh, would that track the amount of light out of the light that it's been used? You said it tracks the hour, right? So you could estimate and say, okay, this is, this is used 1,000 hours shy of its expected life expectancy, we should be prepared to change some of these?
That's correct. It actually tracks total hours burnt as part of the polling, the metering that is done there.
Just a way to help your service contract. You can say, I'm knowing if you place 10 bulbs next year, so we'll plan to have somebody come out. Instead of waiting till they go out and say, we got a dark corner for six months, you know?
Would it be able to detect the degradation in that LED, that lamp's performance?
It wouldn't be able to, well, I would say it wouldn't be able to detect the degradation, although at the same time, if you're having, the only thing that would.
You could set for surge warnings.
That it would be able to set, to be able to alarm you on is that your light output, and that would be potentially, if you're getting some kind of a failure, that, you know, we set alarms on these, and we talk about what these thresholds would be. And these are, you know, under voltage, over voltage, wattage use, so that potentially they would, yes, if there's some kind of a failure, it would potentially ring an alarm, even if it's a partial failure. Yes. But you're not gonna see, the fixtures are rated for 120,000 hours. Over 20 years, you're gonna run for 86, about 86,000 hours of darkness. So you're talking about lights that are, you know, we say expected life is 20 years. If you looked at 120,000 hours, you'd be looking at 27 or 28 years, according to my fast math.
Different than an incandescent or a fluorescent, though, they're not gonna get that much dimmer over their lifetime.
No.
They're gonna stay bright until the end.
Absolutely. And it's really because of the quality of the chip that we're using, A, and secondly, what's happening today, what's changed the industry is the LEDs are being under-driven now. We're using a lot less current driving into the LEDs because the costs of LEDs have come down. We're able to use more LEDs and under-drive them. When you under-drive them, you underheat them. Heat is what degrades them. Yes. So it's all part of the whole package. The housing has been designed as a heat sink. It's oversinked, quite frankly. We separate the driver. The driver actually is on the door, so it's attached to a different piece of metal. So if the driver heats up, it actually doesn't heat the metal of the housing. These are all sort of, you know, well-thought things that are all designed to make sure that.
Which side doesn't like the heat, the driver or the chips?
Drivers and chips both don't like the heat. The great thing about the, the great thing about the Northeast, LEDs love cold. They're slightly brighter in colder weather. They'll actually be a little bit brighter in the winter months than they will in the summer months. It's not that they degrade in the summer months, but cold actually makes LEDs burn brighter. And it's not a lot, it's a percent or two, that it really won't be detectable to you. But because they're in the Northeast, you know, if we were in Phoenix, we might not be talking about, we might not be talking about, you know, actuality of 120,000 hours. You could be talking about a third less in those types of situations. So what do you recommend? What are, what do you think are the next steps? I can leave my cards with you? We can set up to meet at other times? We can talk?
Set up.
Great.
Time, sit down.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
How, is that, what's that replace?
This is 25. You're actually gonna use this to replace your 70 and, 50-watt and 70-watt high-pressure sodiums. This'll be the majority of your inventory. Absolutely, yes. This fixture, though, is used, we use, it's all modular, so I'm gonna take this off for a moment. If you take a look at the fixture, there's 28 points here. On a 25-watt, you'll see that there's only 10 LED chips. You can see sort of the mustardy look. We have an LED, a 10-LED, a 16-LED, and a 28-LED configuration. So on the 28-LED, we actually, through different current, drive both in.
Help, is that, what's that replace?
This is 25, you're actually going to use this to replace your 70 and, 50-watt and 70-watt high-pressure sodiums. This will be the majority of your inventory, absolutely, yes. This fixture, though, is used, we use, it's all modular, so I'm going to take this off for a moment. If you take a look at the fixture, there's 28 points here. On a 25-watt, you'll see that there's only 10 LED chips, you can see sort of the mustardy look. We have an LED, a 10 LED, a 16 LED, and a 28 LED configuration. So on the 28 LED, we actually, through different current, drive both an 80-watt and 100-watt using the same configuration in terms of equipment, and we use a 40-watt and a 65-watt, use a 16 LED configuration.
Took the same light, it's just.
Every, pretty much across the board, every single Cobra head throughout your towns will look the same even though they're different wattages, they don't get proportionately bigger.
Even 1,000? John was saying the other day, you put a, you changed 1,000 though.
He did, we changed 1,000, that's a, that's a, that's a 280-watt.
That must be bigger, isn't it?
It's a larger fixture, the spec is actually in your book for the larger one, that's a big fixture, yeah. That's a big fixture, it's.
But, but a lot smaller compared to the 1,000-watt that you took out.
Oh, absolutely. And, sorry, it's a 240-watt, you're burning 240 watts versus 1,100 watts, and I think North Burwick is the only town that has.
We have one.
You have 1,000-watt flood, but that'll be, that'll be exchanged with a.
That's at our, that's at our transfer station.
Yes, that's a big light.
People go there in the dark.
It's your transfer station, Public Works.
People go to Public Works, they go sit down in the dark.
Actually, I'm traveling, it's a lot, we're in a box, box park, we have 8 box lights that we have.
Yeah, because I didn't notice a park in there, because I'm in a park there, I park there, like.
Like a much better investment than solar to me, pays back in 3 years, solar pays back in 40 years.
That's why I told you, that's why you should look at all this.
I have them all through my house, never had one burn out yet.
Well, they do go, they do go, but it's the, when you look at it, over 20 years.
27 years. And invest, 20,000?
No, Mike, I totally lost your, I think we're talking about Elliott's cost, it was around, 50,000.
Save a half million dollars, a thousand times, save.
Are we on dogs, folks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chip.
You're a great show. Is Mike very junior?
Yes.
Mike, props to you, send the next mic for the next one.